Hello, good afternoon from Austin, Texas. On behalf of the NMC, I'm delighted to welcome you to the NMC Next Virtual Town Hall Meeting. In today's event, we're building on the discussions from the latest NMC Town Hall Meeting that took place at the 2016 NMC Summer Conference. To advance our NMC Next Initiative, which was created so NMC'ers can guide us into our next phase of transforming education by proposing new ideas and recommendations through five key questions about our organization, publications, and programming. I'm your host today, Alex Freeman, Senior Director of Membership and Special Projects at the NMC. I'm joined by the NMC's Gordon Jackson on tech support. Please feel free to ask any questions via the Q&amp;A if you encounter any technical problems. Before we get started, we want this to be a conversation driven largely by you, the viewers, who are going to ask some questions of us. You can do that through the Q&amp;A, and we'll have that up and be able to answer questions through that. So our goal today is to hear about how we can advance the mission of the NMC. We're also going to be on Twitter. Our hashtag for today's event is #NMCNext. That's N-M-C-N-E-X-T. First, I would like to thank our NMC members, Tom Hames from Houston Community College and Susan Metros from USC for joining the panel today. But now I'm going to turn it over to the moderator of today's program, Michael Berman. He's our Chair of the NMC Board of Directors. Take it away, Michael.
Thank you, Alex, and welcome. We're glad you're here. I want to just briefly tell you what my role is in the NMC. As a nonprofit organization, the NMC is governed by a board. The main role of the governing board is to oversee the overall health and the strategic direction of the organization. And the number one way we do that is by hiring and supporting a leader for the organization, a full-time staff leader, which we're currently looking at titled as the Executive Director of NMC. And as most of you know, that position's been open since last summer, but we've been working very actively and very diligently to fill the position. And we've had some really outstanding candidates who've stepped up. And the board is very close to making a final decision, and we hope having a contract with the new executive director. So we're hopeful that we're going to be able to announce that before the end of the calendar year, if not very early next year. And that will take us forward into 2017. And the next big milestone for the organization will be when we get together again next summer in June in Boston. So the Summer Conference for next year is June 12th through 15th in Boston, and we hope we'll see a lot of you there. The call for proposals is open right now, and that'll end at the end of January. One of the things we're very excited about at the conference, and we'll talk about this a little bit today, and we'll hope that you'll have some thoughts, some questions, has to do with the conference and what is the role of a conference in the world we live in now, which has changed quite a bit since the NMC Summer Conference began. So one of the exciting events that we're hoping to incorporate into the conference will be a design-thinking-based session to rethink how we offer a conference and what NMC can do that's truly innovative and different, and it will be compelling and make people want to attend. It will be something that is not available anywhere else. And I think that's pretty core to the values of NMC. We want to be on the leading edge. We want to be doing things that other people aren't already doing. We don't want to be a me-too organization. So I'm pleased to have all of you. It's through the health of the participants of NMC, whether members or those who participate in other ways, working together with our fantastic staff, that we really advance the interests of NMC and by doing so, advance the interest of education in North America and around the world. So with that being said, I want to go ahead and get to our subjects. Maybe before I do that, let me just ask briefly, if I can ask, are the panelists to just introduce themselves to you in case you don't already know them? And I'll just mention that in addition to my role, my volunteer role as the Chair of the Board of the NMC Board, I'm a Vice President at California State University at the campus Channel Islands, which is near Los Angeles. So if I could ask Susan maybe to go next, and if you could tell us just a little bit about your background and your history with NMC.
Great. Thank you, Michael. My name is Susan Metros, and I was a board member maybe 10 years ago for the NMC, and I've been on EduCauses Board, just cycled off a couple of years ago. I was Vice Chair of that Board. I'm the former Associate Vice Provost of Technology-Enhanced Learning for the University of Southern California, and most recently served as an Associate Dean of the Jimmy Iovine and Andre Agan Academy of Art Technology and the Business of Innovation. I retired from that position in July, and while I'm still consulting with USC, I'm now doing some educational consulting and also some career coaching.
Great, thank you, Susan.
Welcome.
Tom? Unmute yourself, my friend.
There we go. Sorry, it took me a second. The menu bar disappears when you don't go after it. I'm like, where did that go? Okay. My name's Tom Hames. Actually, I attended my first NMC event almost exactly 10 years ago. It was the San Antonio Regional Conference in the fall of '06. I'm the Director of Technology for Houston Community Colleges Northwest College. We have about 20,000 students on the west side of Houston, Texas. And I have a pretty broad-ranging remit at this point, although it's in the process of changing, around faculty support, student support, and technical support. So I have my fingers in a lot of different pies. Project manager for, I was project manager for the building build out where I'm sitting right now, and I'm also project, one of the project managers for the West Houston Institute, which is a real exciting project we've got building, which will be opening in the spring. And I'm hoping to transition into that some. If you're coming to ELI in February, we're actually going to do a tour, so I know some of you guys come out for that, so please come out and see us.
Great, well, thank you. I'm really pleased to have Tom and Susan with me, and I know because all of us are very passionate about NMC and have a lot of thoughts about it, we could easily spend the hour just talking about NMC. But the real purpose for this meeting is to provide an open forum to get feedback and ideas from you who are members and otherwise involved in NMC, and have ideas about how it can be more effective. And to structure the conversation, we have a series of questions that we developed last summer at the Summer Conference that deal with five critical areas that the NMC has to deal with in order to be successful moving forward into the future. And so the first question, which I'm going to pose to all of you, and I'll just read it, but it's really about the Horizon Report. So what we want to ask is, how can we take what's best about our flagship product, the NMC Horizon Report, which is already accessed by nearly 4 million people a year in 200 countries, and rethink the process by which we create it, disseminate its content, and use it to transform the way people teach and learn around the world? The Horizon Report's been a tremendous success, but there's also been some very principled criticism of it, questions that have been asked about how the Horizon Report is produced, is the methodology as good as it can be? How is it presented? How do we look back over the history of the Horizon Report? And so we're very interested in, because it's so important, because it's the single biggest impact thing that we do, we want to make sure that the Horizon Report is as good as it can possibly be, as useful as it can be, and that it has, it comes from a base of quality and intellectual honesty that's as strong as we can possibly make it. So we're interested in your thoughts about the Horizon Report, what you think is good about it, what concerns or ideas you might have, how can we be better both in how we produce it and how we disseminate it? So let me just ask Susan, I know you've been involved. In fact, when you were on the board, you invited me to join the Horizon Report at that time, probably about eight years ago. So your thoughts about what's working with the Horizon Report and what we need to perhaps rethink for the years 2016 now with a report that's pretty much the same as it's been for the last 10 years?
Well, I think it's still a very, very strong report. I think it's still considered a seminal document, and people do refer to it. I know I look forward to when it comes out. I still get hard copies and hand it out to our president's cabinet, and when I don't do that, they ask me where it is. So I think people really do look at it. I think it's something that does get in the hands of our administrators and executives, which is often very difficult to do with a lot of the materials that come out. I suspect in terms of improvement, it's really a pretty passive document. And you know, it's a PDF or it's a printed piece, and it seems like it could be very interesting, and there could be a lot more being done with it in terms of being able to have it be more interactive and dynamic. It's hard to take it from its passive place elsewhere. Whether, I guess minimally, a set of slides would be helpful, and maximally, there should be a lot of other things we can do with it. I also question how we actually go about deciding what are the trends. I know in the past, when I was involved with it and early on, and I know where you were, it was really crowdsourced. And I'm wondering, in today's day or today's age of data and data analytics and learning analytics, is that really the right way to go about deciding what are the most important trends?
Great. Tom, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I've been on the report now for about five years, six years, actually six years now. And I've watched it morph over time away from technology toward problems, and I like the way that we've allowed it to grow in that way because, I mean, I was watching a video the other day, it says, "The technologies of today are not the ones you need to worry about, it's the technologies of the last 10 years becoming widely used." And so we're seeing the impact of technologies that we were talking about a decade ago, both within our organizations and societally in general. So it's, I think that it's good that it's grown in that way. As a political scientist in training, or by training, some of the ways in which we vote things off the island and so on and so forth, at the end in which topics are eliminated, I think suffer a little bit from small sample size problems and weirdnesses of voting patterns and things like that. Not really sure how you fix that. But as far as, I mean, to me, the most valuable thing out of the Horizon Report isn't the report itself, although it's a very nice propaganda piece that I can hand to people who don't really spend as much time in this world as we do. But the Wiki is just such a wonderful resource of information, and the extent to which we can make that alive, I think, is really important for the future of the report. And also that the report lives on, and we've talked about this in numerous venues and forums, after the print. You know, how do we tie things in going forward? How do we tie them in specifically at the Summer Conference or other events to where we're actually talking about things that are just in the printed page? Because the printed page is dead, it's frozen at that point. It's out of date the second you print it, right? Like any good textbook in government, it's out of date the second you print it. So how do we go around that? I mean, we are a new media organization. We should be able to figure this out.
Great. I have a couple of comments that have come in, and let me just, first of all, thank Larry Miller, who's been involved with us for many years. And he points out, I think it's been a success, but he also points out the lack of interactivity in how it's delivered as a PDF. And then we got a great set of questions here from Brian Alexander, not surprisingly, because Brian Alexander's great at both posing and answering questions. But let me offer some of these up to the rest of the panel, and then maybe I'll give you some of my thoughts. One is, can the NMC community, and I assume he means the larger communities opposed to those who are intimately involved in developing the report, take greater responsibility for Horizon? For example, members from a profession, nation, or region organize their own. I guess that would be something almost like, if you think, look at how TED has extended the Central TED and TEDx and given people the ability to create their own TED conferences, could we do something like that with the Horizon Report? Have a methodology that we could offer to people and let them create their own Horizon Reports? Interesting idea. And also, could members of NMC family launch Minority Reports? So if somebody really thinks that we're off track, could we have a way to publish Minority Reports? Thoughts from the panel on those ideas?
I think they're both good ideas. You know, again, if it was more dynamic and lived more online, it would be much more fluid and much more easier to be able to provide these other components. People could take a piece of it and run with it. You know, there could be more of a debate. I think that would be really interesting, too. And I think Larry's comment where he says, you know, it does get somewhat stale, and Tom mentioned that, you know, once you print it, it's no longer, you know, it's obsolete to a certain degree. That does, I think that's a real concern.
It's interesting, in the process of developing it, since it's done in a Wiki, some of those debates do take place in that space, and that is open, anyone can look at that. But I don't think very many people know that or have the patience to go through a long Wiki with lots of individual comments. So perhaps looking at some of the process, can we expose the process in a way that would be more apparent to a larger audience than in a Wiki, which is somewhat limited in terms of its accessibility from a lot of people's point of view?
I guess you could do is, you could promote the topics, so that, I mean, I may not want to read the whole Wiki, but I may be particularly interested in VR, and so I'm willing to read all of the comments and sources and resources on VR or something like that. And, you know, even if it doesn't make it into the report, maybe there's a way to do the best of the rest or something like that. But so what's much more visible on a web presence? You know, Wiki, Wiki is great for, I mean, it's a kind of tool. It is a tool for what it does, it's doing a great job, but it's not a promotional tool. When I go to Wikipedia, I'm looking for something usually.
Right.
Browsing.
So Mateo, excuse me if I didn't pronounce your name well, Mateo, but that's my, could be my attempt at it, from University of Delaware, talks about the lack of interactivity and mentions video case studies and slide decks. You know, we do do, there are a lot of case studies associated with the Horizon Report, so maybe it's, the way we're promoting it is not good, because there are the links at the end of the report. Now, of course, links from a printed PDF are not terribly useful. But all those links are available on the NMC website, but if people don't know, and a lot of them have videos, but if people don't know about them, if you're involved with NMC and you're not seeing those case studies, then that indicates we need to do something differently, because they're not being associated with the report in the way that we might hope. Susan?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of push and pull. You know, I get a lot of newsletters that come to my mailbox, and in the morning I go through them, and in the evening, but they're pushed to my email. And I don't think I would go and actually, unless I was really interested in a particular topic, or an expert in it, or working in that field, go to the Wiki and drill down. I think the other thing about the Horizon Report that we lose in the fact that, you know, it's a yearly or an annual thing, is they become one-offs. So I'd be very interested to see when we trend something, did it really make that horizon in year three or four? Were we way off? Or, you know, how do we do? And if it did make it, you know, is it now year one or two? I mean, there's been quite a few things that sort of surprised us with that. And I think, again, an online version would give us a lot more flexibility and agility to be able to do that.
They wouldn't have anything to speak about at the conferences.
Okay, well, we're gonna move on.
I've got one thing to add, Michael, before we move on. I don't want to speak out of turn, because I know that Gordon Jackson, our CTO, is on the line here, too. But we are currently moving some of the Horizon Toolset into our website so that we can use it in a different way, to bring it within the NMC and kind of break that silo of that Wiki being another thing. And by doing that, we're going to be able to provide ways of looking at technologies across different sectors and do searches in that way. So we're actively moving in a way that will make those topics a little bit more searchable and a little bit reduce the friction on trying to get a sense of how these trends are changing over time.
Thank you, Alex. And by the way, for those, if you look in the chat, Sam Becker has posted some good links to some of the resources that are available. Again, it's great feedback if people don't know these exist, and it tells us we need to think about how to get the word out about them. But there's some links, for example, to a set of slides associated with Horizon Report and videos. So at least if you're on the discussion today, I think it's great that Sam's put those resources there and you know where to find them. But again, good feedback to us that we need to think about how to get the word out, because if this is a very involved audience within NMC, doesn't know they exist, then I can imagine that most people have no idea. So thank you for that. I did want to acknowledge Beth Markanka's idea of building in a way to have comments and adding links so that people could actually go to the report and add links. We solicit links, and then we add them, but actually letting people add some links themselves might make sense. There is.
I suggested at one point that we could.
Avoidance issue you have to deal with, but. And then I think I'm gonna go on.
I said, I suggested at one point that we could freeze the Wiki at the end of the process, but then have a live version of it where people could keep building onto it in addition to, so you can see where it was at the point at which we decided to publish, and then keep going now.
Yeah. And Larry, by the way, Larry's comment in the Q&amp;A about, can we do something less covered than a Wiki? Again, Gordon's working on that, looking at an alternative, alternative tools that are more modern, that would be more attractive, and hopefully allow more people to participate without having to wrestle with the technology. So some more good comments. Thank you, Paul. I'm going to go on to our next topic in the interest of time, which is, how can NMC leverage its unique position as a collaboration between higher education, technology companies, K-12 libraries, and museums? This, in fact, is one of the things that drew me to NMC, because it's quite unusual, especially the connection to the informal learning community with museums that we bring together or attempt to bring together, K-12 and higher education, that we have a long history with technology companies. What can we do in that unique space that nobody else can do? That, that nobody else can do? What can NMC be doing to leverage those connections? So interested in your thoughts on that. Tom, why don't you start?
Well, I mean, I think that's one of the beauties behind the Summer Conference, is that you bring all these people together in a way that was not possible, I think, in a passive way. So, I mean, I think, I think that part works well. I think the problem is really not so much about bringing the people together, it's bringing more people in than the connections. I think the connections are already there, it's just it's a smaller group. And there's a lot of things you have to work through. Unfortunately, a lot of those connections have to be made at a very personal and local level, and doing that remotely, passively, you can get to a point, but after a while, it starts to not work. I mean, we've got a lot of programs that we're planning in the West Houston Institute that are going to be doing exactly that sort of thing, but it's a very local effort. It's about bringing in our local school districts, our local institutions to work together on a bunch of things. And I don't know, I mean, maybe Susan has a brilliant idea to solve this problem.
Well, I don't think I have a brilliant idea, but I have some thoughts and opinions. I'm never at a loss for thoughts and opinions. One is that, I think, you know, Michael, you said the informal learning environments or learning environments, and I think in libraries and museums, and also in companies now, startups and a lot of educational technology companies, it's actually more formalized. There's a lot of new roles for educational technologists, instructional designers, learning scientists, media producers, in all these different areas where five years ago, that wasn't always the case. So I think there's a great opportunity to reach out to individuals that have an interest, and right now, that community seems to me pretty fractured. There are pockets, and there are groups that are working with them, but there isn't really a community of practice that really goes across these different disciplines. And I think the intersections of the disciplines are where there's going to be some really interesting work. I think another place we're sort of missing out, and it's always been a real frustration for me, and I don't have a solution, is, example, at USC, I think the membership goes to, the CIO gets it, but in fact, we have 19 different colleges and schools, and each one of them has individuals that would really benefit from the NMC's, you know, knowledge and interaction and community, but the information never ever gets really kind of trickled down to them. And, you know, I think that's a real lost lead or something we need to take advantage of, how do we get to those people? And I think it would make our community richer to have them as part of the NMC community.
Susan, that might be a great opportunity for us to think about, if we could provide tools to member institutions that are large and complex like USC, that would help them connect across their institutions, it could benefit NMC, and it could be a real benefit to those member institutions. Let me just comment on something that Larry said, and then I actually want to talk to Alex for a minute about membership, because he leads the membership effort for NMC. Larry mentions that our connectivity with museums and libraries has been pretty substantial. In fact, we have people in the museum and the library world on our board. However, I don't think the integration with K-12 has been as smooth, that's his words. And I think that's true. I think that while we have a tremendous desire and tremendous need to understand that we can't solve educational problems by looking at them only in higher education, we have to be closely connected with earlier years of education. The structural differences in the ways of operating are substantial enough that it's been hard enough, it's been hard to do the amount of connectivity we would like to. And I think understanding that, I think taking a model that's worked in higher ed and saying to K-12, "Come on in and join us, we want you," is probably not very effective, and we probably need to better understand the K-12 world, bring in people who do understand that world, and figure out what would make them want to participate with us, rather than simply inviting them, just saying, "You're welcome," has not been adequate. Alex, you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing as far as exploring membership strategy?
Yeah, yeah. Well, first off, we have, we've signed on a membership consultant, which will be working with us beginning of the year in January, to really reassess how we work with our members, how we grow our members, and how we really, you know, one of the things that's unique about us is the role that we play in between universities, libraries, schools, and museums. So how do we, how do we connect greater connections with them? How do we create those greater connections? The reasons I think that we're working very closely with those communities is because of our Horizon Report series. The Horizon Report and the taxonomy of trends, challenges, and technologies, although they're slightly different amongst contexts, that's the common thread that connects all of us. If we're interested in virtual reality, for example, you know, I'm sure museums, schools, libraries, they're all looking at that type of technology. So I think the core, the core of how we connect is how we, how do we take the contents of these reports that we're all interested in, but in our different contexts, how we can bring people together through that? Because I think that's, that's what's brought our community together. Right now, we have around 200 members, which are heavily higher ed. But when we look at those that are involved with our publications on advisory boards and that come to our Summer Conference, our Summer Conference is about almost 50/50 members and non-members. So there's people that engage with us deeply, but we don't have a mechanism right now to bring them into our membership. So the membership consultant will be key in helping us understand how to do that.
Yeah, and, you know, there's questions from Esther Grasian, and I think a comment from Paul as well, you know, related to the cost of membership, Mateo as well. And we're aware that depending on the institution you're at, the size of the institution, the type of institution, what part of the institution pays for the membership, for some people, it's no big deal, they just keep renewing year after year. For others, it's a challenge to come up with the amount of money, because we basically have a one-size membership. There's some variation, but that's basically what we have. And that's, that's a challenge, because we know that for some institutions, they can't consistently keep up with paying the membership dues. I talked to one member at an institution in Canada, and he said, "I really would like to be a member, but I just, the situation has changed. Somebody used to pay half of it, they left. I can only afford to pay half." You know, so these are the kind of questions that we're going to challenge our membership consultant to look at and see, do we need to change the models? The difficult thing for us is a significant portion of our budget depends on those memberships. So simply say, "Well, we'll just have cheaper memberships, you can have individual memberships. We'd like to have as much flexibility as possible, we want to make sure we don't cannibalize a piece of our budget, or if we're going to do that, that we have a transition period so we can figure out how to do that in an effective way, it doesn't damage the organization." So that's a real challenge. But we need to, we need to address it, because I know it's a concern on a lot of people's minds, and the question of what value do we provide for membership is one we're constantly looking at. I know Alex has spent a lot of time working on that. So your thoughts about how to do that, what you would think? And also, you know, if you'd be interested in participating in the work of the consultant, reach out to Alex. I'm sure that the membership consultant is going to be looking to do interviews with members and collect information. So we'd really like to hear from you, what your thoughts are, and what you think would be a good membership strategy for your institution. So something we're absolutely aware of. And again, we want to, we want to transfer, we want to be as inclusive as possible, bring in as many people as possible, and we also want to stay float financially at the same time. So that's, that's the real challenge that we have.
I also think from an outreach perspective a little bit, there are various audiences within institutions. And so one of the unique things about, I think, the NMC in the past at least, that I. that I, that I've been able to deal with, that's been an opportunity here at, at, at HCC has been that it's not just the technologists who are participating, but that there's actually interest and from the faculty themselves as opposed to, you know, this is just a technical conference for geeks. That there's a real focus on that whole technological, on that whole pedagogical aspect of it, but it is a different appeal. And so I think, I think the geeks tend to trend, tend to trend a little more toward educause in that world. And, but the NMC has always been a little more broad based in that sense. And I think that's an opportunity. I was just talking about the K-12 problem. I mean, how do you actually get to the teachers in a public school system? I mean, how do you, how do you make them aware that we exist? I think, you know, how do you do that? Because you're not going to get an institutional buy-in from KDIST or Spring Branch ISD or whatever.
Yeah. And if you have two or three teachers who are passionately interested in what NMC is doing, want to participate, want to bring it back to their schools, they're not going to be able to get thousands of dollars to purchase a membership. So. So what's realistic and what's the right way to build that relationship?
But also don't forget about making it attractive to a straight faculty member as opposed to a technologist first.
Right, right.
I think there's also, I think there's, I think there's also room for, to really explore more of a corporate membership. I went to the ASU GSV, which is the Arizona State University Global Silicon Valley Conference. And it was an eye opener for me. There were hundreds of educational technology companies, a lot of them in the K through 12 space, and hundreds of venture capitalists. I heard real elevator pitches in elevators. It was, you know, quite an experience and I'm probably not getting this number right. I'm not good. But I think educational technology right now is a $3.87 billion business. And these individuals really could benefit from the work that the Horizon Report is doing, from having interaction with our membership. And our membership, I think, could be in terms of jobs and opportunities. I think there's, again, something we're missing and it's an area that I was blown away. And there were very few individuals from higher education. There are very few individuals who are actually in the field. You know, if we could get corporate sponsors interested, maybe some of the membership for education could be subsidized. So just an idea.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain, Brian can confirm this in the chat, but I'm pretty certain that NMC is going to have a presence this year at ASU GSV as part of our work with, with Gates Foundation. So I think it's great you're volunteering to go there and help us, help connect us with corporate members. I think we're going to take you up on that, Susan. So fantastic. Let's go on to the next issue, which is about the conference. We talked about this a little bit before. But the conference has been going for, I think about 15 years, if not longer, we've had a summer conference. And the world has changed a lot in that time. And I'm not saying the conference hasn't changed at all because it has. There's absolutely been innovation in the process of the conference and it's changed in an incremental way. But it's still a conference as a conference. It still has structured in a very similar way to other conferences with keynotes and presentations. You know, five minutes of fame, when NMC started, it was very innovative. Now it's hard to go to a conference. It doesn't have some kind of five minute presentation. So as an innovator, a lot of the things that we created and innovated have now become commonplace, which is good. That, that shows that we've been successful and we've, we've launched new things, but we need to be out in front, be doing things that conferences now, people are going to come to our conference now and say, gee, I wish I could do that, what they do at the NMC conference. And I think that in general, we're, I'd have to say that we're, we're not at that point yet, yet. So the question is, how do we rethink the summer conference? When people get information in such a different way than they did 15 years ago? When social connectivity is so different than it was 15 years ago? People are in this world of sort of continuous connection with so many people. What is it about face-to, we know that face-to-face still has a value, but how do we build on it? How do we, 25th anniversary, wow, we're moving up to 25th anniversary conference. So how do we make the conference that other people wish they had? How do we make the conference that people say, you know, I can only go to one conference a year. I, so I'm going to go to the NMC conference? That for the people who care about what we do, we're the place to be. How do we do that? So that's the question on the table right now.
I always go to the NMC conference because it's the one place in the universe where I can consistently feel like I'm the stupidest person in the room. I mean, I'm really challenged there. And I think that's important that we sell that because it's really the people who make the conference. And so that's the way that we, any way that we can promote that particular aspect of it. And I think until you, unfortunately, as of right now, you, from the outside world, I'm guessing, can you tell the difference between what we offer versus what educause offers, for instance? You know, and it's, I've been to both. It's a very different experience in both instances. So.
Yeah, we, we don't want to be the little educause conference or the little anything conference. We want to be, I, I do, I, I do think that the size is not bad. We could probably stand some room for growth, but I don't think most of us love the educause. The NMC conference wanted to be the size of the educause conference.
Yeah, no. More original, but whatever. Yeah.
But I think we have to be constantly rethinking it because it is one of our flagship offerings that we, we give and, and be looking at as experienced designers to make it an experience that, that people just can't afford to miss. Couple of comments that have come in. Is it, but one was about the experiential aspect. Yeah, Matt, Matheo, I totally agree. New approaches, cut down on content delivery, focus on connections on conference style. Yeah, personally, I would agree with, with all of that. And we, again, we've done some of it, but I think it's time for maybe a more thorough rethinking of, of how it's structured and what we do. Because I, as, as, as Tom said, it's the being in a group of people who know stuff you don't know that you can learn from and learn with. And that typically happens in the hallways and at lunch. And it could happen in more structured ways and on conference sessions. And there's been some of that, but I think, I think a lot more. Paul also mentions the blended onsite, offsite nature of the conference. Sessions that had both onsite and offline, and online participants interacting. I agree that that's great where, where it makes sense and figuring out ways like we worked with, I'm also involved with an organization called Virtually Connecting, and we invited them to participate in conference and they held small intimate chat sessions with presenters, which I think is a great model, looking at what we can learn from them and incorporating to the conference. Matheo also suggested that perhaps we could reward people who volunteer for NMC by offering virtual or face-to-face conference vouchers or discounts. I think we do that to some extent right now. I don't know how structured it is. Again, if we can make the conference grow and get more paid membership, then it's easier to offer more volunteer discounts or, or free, free vouchers. We, we need to make sure we have enough of a paid base in order to pay the, pay the location and cover the costs of putting on a conference, which are pretty substantial. But yeah, and we've certainly have done that, for example, to bring in K-12. I think a lot of the K-12 people, in fact, have been invited and not paid the full cost of attending because we really wanted them to, to be there and be part of the conference and we knew that we couldn't. Comment from Jay Morrison, NMC conference is unique because you can't get what happens there anywhere else. It screams innovation. Perhaps search out even more cutting edge. Yeah, I agree. And I, again, I think tying that with experience design. You know, I, I like the idea of coming to a conference where you just see things that, that you're just not going to see anywhere else. So you really want to be there. And, and the people who go and have that experience come away very excited. I've talked to other people who said that's what they thought an NMC conference was going to be. And they were a little disappointed because they didn't really have those kind of cutting edge experiences. It seemed a little bit too much like everything else. So. And again, when you're an innovator, you have to be constantly innovating. You can't just come up with something and stop there. So that's always the challenge of being in the space.
Michael, I would add to that, that I think we're really missing in, in our, in our options for conferences, edgy. You know, there's a lot of people that are writing papers and there's a lot of information there that's hashing over things that have been done before. Or, but I think that one thing I always liked about the NMC conference is because there was different types of people at it. And because there were people that were actually rolling up their sleeves and doing the work, not just researching about the work. It really had, it was, it's, it's kind of edgy. And I, I think that's a real positive aspect. One of the things we talked about on one of our early calls is maybe really rethinking the conference presentation. And the opportunity as a, as a visual designer, we do something called Design Shirets, where you bring in a topic and you just, you know, bring in people from different types of backgrounds. And whether they're anthropologists or social scientists or historians, you know, we all have those at universities where, you know, that's one thing we have that we, we forget, we take for granted. We have a lot of people, faculty and students and staff that have a real broad spectrum of, you know, backgrounds. And put them around a table and really kick, you know, kick around an idea. I had the great opportunity, I think it was about two weeks ago to go to, let me see if I get the name right. It was, it was the Online Learning Consortium. NMC did a meeting, a workshop, a pre-workshop. And it was Scaling Solutions to Higher Ed's Biggest Challenges. And I know this was partially funded by the Gates Foundation. And we had facilitator leaders, and I think that was open to the NMC conference or to a membership to apply to be a facilitator leader. It was really exciting. You know, we worked on four challenges. We had about 60, 70 people in the room. And people from all different, we had professors, faculty, administrators, staff. And I, I thought most people got a lot out of it. So those type of things I think are all on the table. And we just have to think beyond what a conference looks like and sort of, you know, take it down and say, what, what, build it up to something new.
Great. I'd like to, to jump in and answer a question similar, similar to, to what we've been talking about is, is this kind of problem-based learning that we write a lot about in our reports and, you know, using design thinking as some, some strategies in order to get there. Brian Alexander asks, if NMC does online events during the year, how can they be added to the face-to-face summer conference? Well, our online events are planned for 2017 as to look at the challenges publication that came out that Susan references. This is something that we started discussions around during South by Southwest EDU and continued into OLC. And so we want to keep the solutions coming. So the, the plan for the online events is for us to go back and focus on those more less of a, of a discussion and more of some, some activity within the online space where we can have online breakout rooms and go, you know, come up with some more solutions for this. And that could be something that we, we add to our, our summer conference component. So it keeps us always thinking, you know, we've been, our online events have typically been related to trends and technology topics. But I think moving to challenges, it offers us an opportunity to, to bring the, the, the brain trust of, of the NMC community together to help solve this. And I think that's, that's where we're well positioned is to facilitate these types of conversations and come up with solutions with the NMC members.
Great. So I'm, I'm going to, this topic isn't exhausted, but we have two more. Everything that you're typing is being collected and so that we're going to have this and the board, whole board can take a look at it. We tremendously appreciate all the great ideas. And as you have them after today, please go ahead. If you use Twitter, you can tweet them out with NMC Next, hashtag NMC Next. And we'll, we'll see them there. If, if not, you can feel free to send me an email or Alex or Sam or anyone else because we really do want to compile as many of these ideas as possible for, for our planning. So, so thank you for, for all the great suggestions and the, and the comments. Let's keep it coming. Going on to the next topic, because we have less than 20 minutes left. How can the new media consortium as an organization lead as an exemplar in use of digital media? You know, I, I, again, I, I tend to be a very self-critical person, both for myself and organizations that I belong to. And yes, we do video, we do do some very nice things, but our single biggest product that we're known for is a PDF. And so how do we, how do we move beyond that? And how do we get back to the time when NMC with, you know, was working on some things which now seem pretty dated perhaps, but were pretty cutting edge at the time. It's a Pachyderm project with Second Life. We were doing things that no one else was doing. And you could, you could say, well, were these sustainable or were they long-term solutions to any problem? Maybe, maybe not, but they were edgy and they were different. And they attracted a lot of attention. And I think they opened people's minds to possibilities and different ways of doing things. What should we be doing now to get back to that? And right away we got Brian, Making and Sharing VR AR Materials. What is MR, Brian? Does anyone, anyone know what, anyone know what MR? I know what.
Mixed reality? Is that mixed reality?
Mixed reality? Oh, I've been in that for a long time.
I was going to say, in that life?
Yeah, good. Yeah, we got that from, from Mish at UMB, Mixed Reality. Thanks, Mish. And, and Brian, not mixed up reality. Yeah, okay, that's what I have. Yeah. So that's a great thought. Could NMC be a coordinator to bring members together to actually be developing VR and AR materials? That's a really exciting thought. I do think it's something that's fundable either from corporations or, or grant funders. And not necessarily NMC making them, but NMC members making things and NMC serving as a platform to bring people together to do that. That's a real exciting thought. You know, hands up if you want to do that. We'll see who, who we can get, get involved in that. Very interesting.
I think having more dynamic content in general, I mean, we've been talking 2.0, Internet 2.0, Web 2.0 for a decade now. The Horizon Report in many ways is still very much a 1.0 type of product. So having a website, having a more dynamic discussion going on at all times will take us a long way toward that. Also, putting it on the web allows us for, allows us to create more dynamic communities in terms, I mean, sorry, communities, communities, yes, but content, you know, videos and things like that, which we wouldn't be able to put up otherwise. There are collaborative online environmental tools like MindMeister and mind mapping tools where we could actually be doing live mind mapping or something like that around problems and so on and so forth, where we're actually doing. And arguably, it's not as effective as having everybody in the same room, but it saves a lot of airfare. So, so, you know, a combination of those sorts of things. I think there's some real opportunities with technologies becoming a lot more accessible than they used to be. And so the problem with Second Life at one level is that it really wasn't that accessible. The barriers to entry were rather high. I went to a lot of great events there, but I never bothered to buy myself the Peacock outfit or anything.
Well, go ahead, Susan.
You, it's funny, I had forgotten about Pachyderm and you, when you said Second Life, it brought back, I wonder whatever, what happened to Corinth and her purple hair and her perky butt? I don't know where she is now. But what I would like at NMC to be and where I don't get it anyplace else is I need to borrow a, a term from our new, from our new political landscape. I need a sanctuary organization. I need a place that's a safe place to go to try these things out. Where I don't have to invest it in my own university, because I remember trying to buy a Second Life island and trying to get that to purchasing. And, you know, that in itself, I could write a book about. But the fact that NMC could do it and I could go experiment with it. And whether it blasted or not, at least I had that experience. It was a stepping stone to something else. And even Pachyderm and learning objects, I mean, it was an opportunity to explore something where I couldn't have put up that infrastructure myself. And boy, nobody else does that for me anymore. I forgot that. I miss that.
Right. Yeah, I, I just put in the comments, NMC is a safe place for innovation. That's a, that's a really interesting concept. Other thoughts on media? This actually leads right into our last question, but let me just ask before I do that. You know, we mentioned the various Rs, the R family, various families of reality. Jay Morrison says, perhaps we should live in the long-range trends and wicked challenges space. And yeah, I agree. And we are doing that. I think, I think that we need to be doing it more and promoting it. I think that sessions like the one Susan's describing that were built around challenges are, are, are a strength of ours and figuring out how to bring that to more members and bring more members into the discussion. It would be fantastic. I'm just looking at Paul's note here.
Yeah, the best thing I ever saw on Second Life was Jim Groom's presentation on, well, I think ostensibly was on learning management systems. And he accused the audience to being a bunch of zombies and whipped out a flamethrower and set everybody on fire, which kind of doesn't work in a real conference. But I, that was the first time I sat, was in Second Life and going, okay, now we've finally done something that you can't do anywhere else.
And now with augmented reality, you could do that in a face-to-face conference, right?
That's true. Yeah. You know, we could, we could set people on fire and, you know, virtually all the time now.
As Brian says, a face-to-face event like the summer conference cries out for AR. Okay, there's our challenge. We've got six months. Let's go.
Idea.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if I want to go here, but if anybody here has read Daniel Suarez's Demon, one of the things there is that they have these AR glasses. Basically, they have, they'll. Basically, they have, they'll project over everybody's head, like reputation score, their credit rating, all of this other stuff, and it's always floating over their heads. So we should definitely go, get right on that, Gordon.
How about innovation rating? What about your innovation rating?
Your innovation rating?
Well, this leads us great into the, to the final point, which is really kind of an amalgam of, of all of what we talked about. And that's the, the mission of, of NMC. So in a world of instantaneous collaboration, massive open knowledge sharing, and virtual augmented reality. And I would add to that, in a, in a time of very difficult politics and social development, regardless of where you sit on the political spectrum, but just a time when there's a lot of worry and concern and fear and anger, what's the role of NMC in that world? What should we, who should we be? What can we do, and what can we do that nobody else can do?
Check out.
Check out?
Into a virtual world.
Okay.
It's all good.
Yeah, I don't think we want to be Black Mirror.
That's right, that was, that was a thing of Black Mirror, too.
Up ahead, there's Time Post, the NMC.
I'd sure like to have their producer come talk at one of our conferences.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. No, I mean, I think, I think that a safe place to innovate is, is a good way, good way to look at it. I mean, one of the things, again, in the, the, that we're having a lot of trouble getting people wrapping their heads around with the West Houston Institute, is the idea of fail fast, fail, fail often, and the importance of failure. And so if we can sort of bring that message home to the conference attendees or in general, that these are ways in which you can experiment with some of this new stuff without mortgaging your entire annual budget to it. Because that, to me, is really one of the excitements. I think one of the things I've really seen in the last couple of years about with technology as a concept is I'm starting to see some serious plummeting of costs in terms of rethinking problems. Let me give you one example. In the West Houston Institute, we recently had to pull a video wall out of this budget, because it was, it was busting the budget, it was $175,000. And I have a little mini maker space here. And basically, they built a video wall out of Raspberry Pis and surplus monitors as a demonstration project. And basically, I'm to a point now where the cost of the video wall, once we do build it ultimately, is going to be the cost of the TVs. And so I'm suddenly down to maybe 16, 50-inch TVs. So that's what, 10 grand, somewhere in that range? That is a seismic shift in cost structure around that. And I'm starting to see that happen in a lot of different areas. And so the idea that you can do these sort of crazy things. Making is another thing I think we haven't really embraced to the extent that I think we could. And how does that change? I mean, how does 3D, how are 3D objects media? Is a good example. I'm sure somebody will bring that to the conference at some level, maybe as soon as, as soon as next year. But I mean, all of those, media has become such a huge area. And I think there's a lot of real opportunities for weird stuff to happen. But the idea that you can have an experimental conference, where you can be trying things and letting them fall apart. Maybe, maybe do weird societal experiments on the, on the attendees and see what they.
I don't think we're going to be that edgy.
Do some milk room experiments.
No animal, no animals used in these experimentations, right? I would have to add that, maybe because I've been coaching lately and I've been thinking a lot about individuals, but I think people that are in our field don't always get the respect at campuses. And I think that there's a glass ceiling for women sometimes in IT professions. And I think NMC could play a role in really helping to address the individual who's in the field, whether it be through coaching, or through some sort of, you know, sessions at our meetings or at our conference, where we really help people grow both professionally, you know, and help them maximize their potential and their, and their direction. I think it's, again, it's something that doesn't happen at other conferences.
Yeah, and I think it's related to some of the comments we got on the chat from Esther, which is focusing on the benefits, or, or I would say even beyond the benefits, the impact of technology, because it's not always benefits. I, personally, I think we ought to be willing to talk about where technology doesn't work or where it hurts people, as well as where it helps people. You know, I've, I've, we have a statement about our mission, and it says something like, "NMC is a bastionally pro-technology." And I have to admit, when I see that, I wonder whether I really, I'm not sure I completely agree with that. I think we're massively pro-exploring what technology means. I think we're massively pro-impact of technology. But I don't think, personally, I don't think we should always be pro-technology. I think we should, we should be an organization that takes a very hard-edged look at the relationship between technology and people, and advocates for what's right for people and what's right for, for learners as, as people are generally involved in education, as opposed to just being pro-technology. So it's a, it's a, maybe a subtle difference, but I think an important one. And I think, Tom wrote there, "It's not about technology, it's about how technology augments what you could do." And I, you know, I know a number of us are fans of the Doug Engelbart approach and thinking about augmentation. It's how technology augments rather than replaces what it means to be human, less is to become more human, as opposed to be dehumanizing. And, and again, I think that's a place that we can be as an organization, that we're, we're about the, how technology augments improves human life, not about how it makes us more like machines. And that relates also to what, what Larry commented in the Q and A, which is, "NMC has always had a fun component." And I, I really agree with that, I think that's really important. I think that we've never been afraid to come together and have fun. And I, I very much would like to see that continuous part of our culture, because I think fun helps you learn. You learn more when you're having fun than when you're not, so, especially hard fun. So with that, we've got just a couple of minutes to wrap up. About a minute apiece, Tom and Susan, and then I think we need to go. So Susan, you got any final party words for us?
Just that we have a tremendous opportunity here, and that it's not always that you have a board and an opportunity of a new leader coming in, where you can sit down and say, what should we be? And let's, let's take, you know, let's put everything on the table. Let's take us down to our underwear and really figure out how we should dress this, and, you know, how we feel about it. So thank you for this opportunity. I think, you know, like I said, this is a special time, we shouldn't, we shouldn't let it pass without being proactive.
Tom?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we don't want to lose sight of is the narrative, the idea of the story. And what is the story of the NMC? What is the story of the summer conference in particular? I mean, I have a multitude of stories over the years from there. But right now, I think one of the dangers, and actually, this predates the current transition period a little bit, is this fractured narrative. And we do this, we do that, we do this, we do that. That's not to be prescriptive in terms of, you can't talk about these things, or you can't talk about those things. But I think there's an underlying story to everything that we have always done in this organization. And we just need to surface that and bring it to the fore again. And then everything else will fall into place around that. Again, augmenting human intellect is a good place to start. And I know we have a number of prominent members who are big fans of Doug Engelbart and that approach and that thought. And I certainly operate in that way. I mean, I don't, I don't really give a crap about technology. I give a crap about what technology lets me do. As a photographer, as a creative person, as a, as a, trying to help other people fulfill what they're trying to do. That's my job. It's, it's not about cranking computers out, it's not about the shiny toys, you know. And that's a hard message to sell to the outside world, because they only see those shiny toys. I mean, they see my D-Lab, and they say, oh, cool, 3D printers. No, it's what they're building in there. They built this really cool device, they built an augmented reality sandtable, they built this.
Or even who's building in there, right?
And it's my, and it's the students building in there on their own. This is not a class assignment, they're just going in there and playing. So to the extent that we can make the conference like that, I think we can be students. We're all students, so don't forget that either.
Yep, well, thank you. I think it's a great place to end, teachers, learners, students, and stories. And the end of the day, the stories are more important than the technology we use to create them. I think we can all agree on that. So thank you so much for joining us. Any, any last words, Alex? We hope you all keep in touch and keep the ideas flowing.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and wrap things up. I want to thank you, Michael, Susan, and Tom, for joining us today to talk about our membership and kind of the future of the NMC. Michael, we'll be back two weeks from today for our next NMC Beyond the Horizon, where we're going to talk about digital literacy. It's going to be a big one, so I hope that you can register for that if you're interested at all in digital literacy. Participants, if you want more information about anything you saw or heard today, you can let me know by contacting me directly at alex@nmc.org. To learn more about future NMC online events or programs, or to get involved in our community, you can visit us at nmc.org, like us on Facebook, or follow us on Twitter at @nmcorg. Thank you all, and have a good afternoon.
Thanks, thank you, Alex. Bye now.